Welcome and thank you for standing by. At this time, all lines are in a listen-only mode until the question-and-answer portion of today's call. At that time to ask a question, you may do so by pressing * and then 1 on your touch-tone phone. Today's call is being recorded. If you have any objections, you may disconnect at this time. And I will now turn today's call over to Janet Gordon. Ma'am, you may begin.
Thank you so much and good afternoon or possibly good morning, everyone. My name is Janet Gordon and I am Associate Director for Community Affairs at the FDIC. I'm happy to welcome you. So Money Smart for Small Business is the topic of our webinar today. We're going to cover a couple of things in our agenda. Money Smart for Small Business recent news to ensure that all of you are aware of recent updates. Also hear from two Money Smart for Small Business Alliance members about their programs and maybe get some tips about how we can use these tools. I'm based in Washington DC. In my role as the FDIC Community Affairs Associate Director, I oversee two sections. One is responsible for the Money Smart brand and we try to keep it current. And one is the Community Affairs section which consists of all of our field staff nationwide. And I'm glad to say that these resources are available to you to help you promote economic inclusion for very small businesses. I know that many of you partner with FDIC Consumer Affairs Specialists in your states fostering economic inclusion. Many of you also work not only with Money Smart for Small Business but also might be using other Money Smart curriculums that we offer. Money Smart for Adults or Older Adult and maybe even Money Smart for Young People which does include entrepreneurship elements. We encourage you to look on our website to learn about all the different Money Smart curricula and also to find your Community Affairs Points of Contact depending on your location if they're not on your speed dial already. Today, we have probably more than 50 participants in this call and we really are glad that many of you are joining us for the first time. And this is because we decided to extend this opportunity not just to current Money Smart for Small Business Alliance members but also to organizations that are interested in joining the Alliance or who just want to know more about MSSB. So we encourage participants to ask questions during the question period and throughout the call if you want to use our special instant message function which we'll talk about in a minute. But for things that are not focused on the general topics of conversation or our two great Alliance partner examples, for example, for specific information on our website, on our Community Affairs Specialist or for our Point of Contact in Washington, Paula Diaz who we'll be speaking to in a minute, we really want you to hold specific calls that focus on how you join the Alliance or how you use the website or other things like that for Paula because she'll give you a very specific tailored answer and it might be quite a long one. So I finally also particularly want to acknowledge our colleagues from the US Small Business Administration, Donald Smith, Jack Benko, and Nathaniel Bishop. We use every opportunity to remind stakeholders that Money Smart for Small Business is a collaboration between the FDIC and the SBA and both of us really work hard to get, give you opportunities to collaborate. We like to put Money Smart for Small Business Alliance members in touch with each other so you can learn from each other. Since Donald is new at the SBA team, he'll take a few minutes to explain his role. Donald, please introduce yourself to our audience and Jack and Nathaniel, please feel free to join in and share announcements that you may have for our audience as well. Donald?
Sure. Thanks so much for inviting me. I'm Donald Malcolm Smith. I'm the Director of the Office of Entrepreneurship Education within the Office of Entrepreneurial Development at the Small Business Administration. My role is to support the administration and implementation of SCORE, the Emerging Leaders Initiative, as well as Encore Entrepreneurship and other special projects that may arise that support the growth and development of America's entrepreneurial ecosystem. Generally, SBA helps America's entrepreneurs grow business and create jobs by providing resources and tools to access capital, access opportunities for federal contracting, and entering our economy's growth sectors. And then most importantly, assistance after a natural disaster. We realize our mission through our fabulous field staff and our resource partners located across the nation. I want to talk for a second about our resource partners, their valuable source of information and assistance. Three of which I'd like to highlight are the Women's Business Centers, the Small Business Development Centers, and SCORE. With more than 100 locations across the country, our Women's Business Centers promote the growth and development of women-owned businesses. Another resource partner, the Small Business Development Centers, or SBDCs, act as one stops for individual and small businesses and provide management assistance through 63 lead and 900 subcenters. I'm proud to highlight SCORE. SCORE is more than 50 years old and it's administered directly within the Office of Entrepreneurship Education. It provides free confidential volunteer-based support through 320 chapters and 11,000 volunteers, many of who are retired executives. Another program that we have which is not necessarily a resource partner but is nonetheless of value to the small business community is the Emerging Leaders Initiative which has aided more than 2,000 small business owners in sustaining and growing their businesses. Our staff and resource partners help us realize SBA's mission and we emphasize three Cs: capital, contracting, and counseling. Because of this, there's a natural alignment between SBA and the FDIC. So not only does SBA value a strong partnership with FDIC, but I'm personally excited to support the FDIC's efforts to connect financial institutions and communities to promote reinvestment and economic inclusion. A great representation of the product of our working relationship is the Money Smart for Small Business Curriculum. This partnership has yielded an incredible resource for small businesses and the organizations that support them. So to learn more about SBA and our efforts to promote the success and sustainability of small businesses across the country, please visit www.sba.gov/Headquarters/VED. And with that, I'll turn it over to Nathaniel and Jack.
Thank you, Donald. One of the things that I want to highlight within SBA, like Donald mentioned, one of the things that we also work on within our program office is our partnership with AARP. And during this time, it's the Summer of Encore Mentoring. So our district offices as well as our resource partners that Donald mentioned as well as the folks at AARP are working over the summer and actually holding various Encore events. With that said, I want to highlight our Learning Center which is SBA's online portal for a host of self-paced online training. Two courses that I want to highlight is the Encore Entrepreneurs, an Introduction to Starting Your Business, as well as the Encore Entrepreneurship for Women. Those are two great courses that we would like for people to log in and also use as well as not only those courses, but we have a variety of courses with our Learning Center. Another popular course is How to Write a Business Plan as well as Introduction to Accounting. So please go to www.sba.gov/learning. Once again, that's www.sba.gov/learning and that's the SBA's Learning Center. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. It's a great partnership and we really appreciate working with you. So you'll hear my voice again at the end of this meeting, but at this point, I'm turning it over to Paula Diaz who is our National Point of Contact for Money Smart for Small Business. Paula?
Thank you very much, Janet. But before I get started, I want to make sure that we didn't miss Jack Benko. If he wanted to jump in, he might address the audience now or maybe later. Jack, are you in the call? Okay. I'm sure he will jump in and hopefully you will have questions that SBA, FDIC, or the presenters can answer for you. Before you, you have a slot number five with a few Money Smart for Small Business recent news. I am a Senior Community Affairs Specialist based in Washington DC and I work on coordinating national outreach and support our staff in helping organizations that are interested in joining or are currently members of the Money Smart for Alliance, for Small Business Alliance. I am also responsible of overseeing any updates to our Money Smart for Small Business products and resources. And I will be using the term MSSB when referring to Money Smart for Small Business going forward. Again, welcome to all the organizations that are investing this time to learn about a very valuable free resource for your entrepreneurial community and to existing Money Smart for Alliance members who may get some good implementation ideas from today's presentation. First of all, I want to encourage you to use the Live Meeting Instant Message or Question and Answers function. I'm going to demonstrate right now in the screen. On top of your slide, you should have a bar that has several menu options, one of them Q&amp;A. And you can type a question anytime as I'm going to show you. And that way, you can communicate with me privately. Others will not see your questions and you can pause questions as they emerge or you can utilize the function to ask your questions whenever the designated question and answers Please note that all participant lines are muted but the operator will assist you in opening the line for live questions. You do not have to identify yourself when asking a question to the audience, but you have to identify yourselves when you speak with the operator of line. Now, I'm going to tell you what's new about Money Smart for Small Business. I want to remind everyone that we have recently updated our Money Smart for Small Business webpage by adding records from previous town hall meetings. And provided that the technology worked successfully today, this call will also be posted for future reference. Alliance members recently received an email inviting them to ratify their membership by going to the new Alliance Membership Sign-Up link that will help us maintain an updated Alliance database. The previous version of the Money Smart for Small Business Alliance agreement has been discontinued. Today, it only takes a couple of minutes to join the self-certification and the self-certification is good for three years. Members will receive a reminder to update their membership before the expiration date. And the link to join can be found at the www.fdic.gov/MoneySmart. The biggest news that I have for you today is that we are about to complete the Money Smart for Small Business Train the Trainer Curriculum which is intended to be a self-help tool to assist Money Smart Alliance members to train their staff and volunteers to become MSSB instructors. This curriculum is consistent with other Money Smart for Small Business modules and it consists of an instructor, instructor guide, participant guide, and PowerPoint. This resource will replace the guides to presenting MSSB and it will be launched to the public very shortly. All participants to this webinar will have the advantage to receive the premium news as soon as this is available. We will send you an announcement with a link to the location of the curriculum download as soon as possible and as soon as it is available. Other news that might still be new for some of the webinar attendees are that we added three new modules to the Money Smart for Small Business suite which are Good Fit, Planning, and Cash Flow for sure. We're also very interested in learning if you're using the Spanish version of MSSB, please let us know if that is the case. Another announcement or clarification given a number of questions that I received recently is that you do not have to be an MSSB Alliance member to download the curriculum. Anyone can download it as long as they create an account at the FDIC catalog website which is provided in the screen. For those that are experiencing problems with the download, they can still request a CD format with Money Smart curriculums including the MSSB which now comes in a bilingual format. All English and Spanish versions of all modules come in one CD. We definitely encourage organizations to join the Alliance even though they are not required to join in order to download and experience the module. At this point, I want to open it up for questions. Operator, do we have any questions?
If you would like to ask a question on the audio, please press * and then 1 on your touch-tone phone. Ensure that your phone is unmuted and please record your name as it is required in order to introduce you. So again, that's * and then 1 on your touch-tone phone in order to ask a question and it will take just a few moments for any questions to queue up on the audio.
Okay. I do not have any questions in the Q&amp;A section yet. I guess people are taking time to figure out how it works. We're going to give them time. We will have time to address your questions. If not during this webinar, I will be happy to address any questions offline.
I do show one question on the audio.
I'm happy to take the question before we move forward. Go ahead.
Renella, your line is open.
Hi. Okay. What I would like to know is those email addresses that they gave out earlier, are you guys going to send out a link to those because I would love to have that?
Yeah, absolutely. I can commit to collect the different websites and email addresses that were shared by the SBA colleagues earlier on and add that to the presentation. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I shall know other questions in queue at this time.
Thank you very much. We will proceed to the next segment of the presentation. So our first Money Smart for Alliance member speaker today is Kim Olet. I hope I'm pronouncing her name correctly, from United Way of Northeast Florida. She's the Program and Services Manager of the Real Sense Program and she will introduce herself and her organization and talk to us about her experience implementing Money Smart for Small Business in the last couple of years. How much we're agreeing to present today. Kim, you can go ahead.
Thank you very much for having me. Thank you for having me. I look forward to presenting what we have learned in the two years that we've been delivering Money Smart for Small Business. I will also refer to it as MSSB. My name is Kim Olet and Program and Services Manager for the Real Sense Program at United Way of Northeast Florida. I've been with United Way for nine years and in my current role, one year as a Program and Services Manager and have two years of small business development experience and 20 years of training experience. I enjoy what I do and we have really evolved in our role as being a leader in financial education and that's how we started with our tax sites and financial education. Could we go to the next slide, please? Next slide. Thank you. At United Way, I don't know how many members are part of the United Way family, but what we try to do in the United Way family is we try to provide leadership and resources to help the community focus making sustainable improvements in education, income, and health. United Way of Northeast Florida is part of the United Way umbrella and a 90-year-old organization and is respected and with an efficient and philanthropic organization that lies in the volunteer-driven community impact model. By working with community impact and collaborations with our agencies and partners and volunteers, we're able to create the greatest amount of success in our community. When we first started our Money Smart for Small Business offerings, we started with two sessions, one at the beginning and one in the fall. And we're staying with that model. We have tried to offer still spring and fall at two locations and that was where the big change took place. First time out, we only offered on one side of town and Jacksonville covers a large geographic area and we felt that that was somewhat limited as the number of participants that may attend at any one session. So we looked at our EITC Schedule C and looked at how we were, the clients that we were currently receiving, taking care of in our tax preparation and who we'd want to try to serve down the road and found that we went to the most designated areas on the west and the north side. So now we offer two workshops in the spring and two workshops in the fall at these locations. Within those workshop series, we offer six of the Money Smart for Small Business workshops on an every-other-week basis. We currently have eight partners that are engaged in facilitating the sessions and workshops and they were trained by our community specialist, April Acton. Seven of the community partners involved also in promoting the Money Smart for Small Business We were able to do this by creating a meeting environment initially and bringing all the partners to the table and finding out best practices and finding out how to best serve the small business either already in place or start-up businesses. The messaging from these groups and individuals was very important to the success and how to reach this group. And by bringing them all to the table, everybody had a vested interest. That is a big part of what we do at United Way is the collaboration piece of what we do. Our marketing was supported by SBA and their partners, financial institutions and local networks. So we don't look to be always the leader in developing a program. We look at what is currently being done and those individuals and partners who are already working with a particular segment that we are trying to service. This has been very significant because our partners are SBA, SCORE, JSEB which is for small and emerging businesses in Jacksonville, the Women's Business Center, Small Business Development Center, financial institutions, local network distribution. By using local network distribution, we may be touching individuals and clients that we might not have normally had access to within our own distribution network. The library system has paid a big impact and our ability to go to the libraries, it's offered us free services and they help promote on their website which is significant and their social network. They do announcements on our behalf as well. So this has been a significant impact this time around. Next, you see a sample of our marketing tool that we use. We send this out at our outreach. The flyers are shared with partners. It is also shared with individuals and posted on websites around the city and we get not only local exposure, but since it is promoted on websites, we can get a more tri-county area, six-county area, and it goes beyond our geographic area. We find that the marketing and the branding is very important when people are looking for solid representation of a curricula. Again, I mentioned the libraries have had great performance thus far. We have doubled our existing attendance. The easy access, the space is free for us. Individuals sometimes are at the library doing some type of research and hear about the announcement. They can drop in without pre-registering. The AV equipment and computer labs are available to us and the staff at these locations have been very understanding and flexible to help us bring these workshops to their locations. We do provide little snacks as a little side treat for anybody who might attend and the location change has allowed us to serve a larger audience. Both of the locations that we've chosen thus far are on major arteries where there are many small businesses already located. The curriculum that we offer is obviously Money Smart for Small Businesses. We've chosen those six, identified six of the modules that are currently available. We also during that time, we provide an overview of other Real Sense services because what we have found is that many times in a start-up business, they do not understand or did not have knowledge that maybe their personal finances would have a significant impact in how they may be able to proceed with starting up a business. So we're able to service those individuals who may have issues with personal finances. At Real Sense, we offer the free tax preparation, financial budget, and counseling that's available and we try to offer wraparound services at our Prosperity Place and we found this to be an effective tool to service them through their, for their small business and for their personal finances. During each of the presentations, we have two to three experienced presenters and we find that this is helpful too for the flow of the workshops. Next slide, please. How was the groundwork laid? We initially started with April providing a Train the Trainer clinic for all of the future volunteers who would come in and deliver the workshop. So we signed an MOU and outlined what our goal was and when we were going to be delivering and who we thought our clients to be served were before the first class was ever offered. We found that having instructors from various businesses such as private, financial institution, SBA, SCORE members gives a vast amount of experience so that when they're providing the instruction to those in attendance, the participants really gain the most by having that one, truly one-on-one experience that if somebody did not have that financial background or the experience of already owning a small business that they wouldn't get from a volunteer who had a totally different background. So we find that that is most beneficial. In order to fulfill a requirement that JSEB from the city of Jacksonville has, we provided a certificate. But not only what we changed this time about the certificate, it was important for us to again, keep the branding so when individuals and participants and partners, agencies are looking at that consistency is key to creating a viable product on the road. And so what we do is we distribute a certificate for each of the workshops. One workshop is two hours long. Each participant will get a certificate that they may have to use for JSEB as far as continuing education credits as part of their contract. For start-up businesses, I think that it's a great advantage for somebody to show that they did attend something and they get walk-away materials beyond the certificate. They do get the participant guide and any subsequent materials that they would need to review long after the presentation was done. So one of the questions that may often come up, what do we do to bolster attendance? How do we follow up? Because of course, we track our attendees and our participants as part of our data collection, but it's not just about the data, it's about serving a client's needs and did we fulfill that need. So two things happen. Initially, once they've attended a workshop, we thank them and this is a sample of what we send out. We thank them for attending the workshop and remind them of the upcoming workshops that have available. Down the road, after they've attended the series, if they've attended all of them, we will follow up with them in a 30-day period to see if they have any more questions. We will also keep them on our mailing list to invite them to future workshops that may come around town because they may have missed one out of the series of six. Next slide. So is our program working? I feel that we're in our infancy because we're at our first full year of running all your workshops for Money Smart for Small Business. So is it sustainable? We had, as I mentioned, great success on the first location and we are looking at our next dates to come at late fall for the location that provided us up to 10 attendees at any of our workshops which was pretty significant, a 50% increase over last year's attendance. So that and alone, we know that we conserve this population, that this population is looking for additional information and if they're interested in starting up a business that if they're not quite there with their personal finances, we are able to offer that support system by bringing them in to our financial education classes offered by Money Smart for Adults that we offer around the city that they can attend that and learn how to improve their credit scores, learn how to do basic budgeting if that's the case, and look at their financial future from a personal perspective as that will certainly affect their successfulness as a small business owner. We know that location and will affect the ability to keep the workshops going. Next slide. So was it a connection to our mission? So as I mentioned, we look at the amount of services that we offer. So now that we know that we can service the client all the way from using Money Smart to young people, we can service our older adults and our adult curriculum through Money Smart. We now know that we're able to service our tax site clients who are not only individuals but our Schedule C clients and look to offer them integrated services. We feel that this financial stability is really the core to our mission because a financially stable individual household will offer us the foundation to a prosperous community. stable individual household will offer us the foundation to a prosperous community. Next slide. Final advice to everybody is truly, we wouldn't have been able to start the Money Smart program for small business without collaborating with our partners who already had a vested interest and had experience in delivering the Money Smart curriculum out there in the community to small business owners, whether they were startup or whether they were existing. So that is the key to our success, and I think the key to any success is bringing in partners always have value and new ideas that you may not have thought of and suggestions. Thank you, and I'd like to say making smart moves with your money is our RealSense tagline. Thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Thanks very much, Kim. At this point, we want to open it up for questions from the audience.
As a reminder, if you would like to ask questions on the audio, please press star and then one, unmute your phone, and record your name. And again, it will just take a few moments for any questions to queue up on the audio.
I do have a question in the queue, and that is, how did you choose the locations that were selected?
We looked at our data from our tax sites, and then we chose some data from also the City of Jacksonville. We looked at where the library locations were in reference to these, this criteria that we were using. We looked at the size of the library location, and that's how we narrowed down which library locations we thought would best fit the needs of the potential participants.
I have another question. Why did you choose only six of the 13 workshops?
With our partners' expertise and the amount of series, what we see often with the series, by only choosing six, we're more likely to have all members go, all participants start from one through six. We do see a slight lag in the middle, and when we tried to deliver more than six at one time, we saw a significant drop off of the last workshops not even having any attendance. So maybe down to one or two participants beyond the six. So we chose, we started with six based on recommendations and seeing what has happened in the past.
I have another question. How many credit hours do the participants get from attending the series?
So each workshop is valued at two hours of attendance. So it would be a total of 12 hours for the entire series.
Thank you. We have a lot of interest. We're not going to be able to handle all the questions, but I'm going to ask one last question, and that is, maybe your organization would be willing to share the example of the MOU that you mentioned earlier?
Yes, we could get that out there to you.
And with that, I want to clarify, the MOU was not the MOU with FDIC necessarily, but was the MSSB alliance member with other organizations, I suppose. Thank you. With this, there were a few more questions in the queue, but as I said, we're going to try to get, maybe go back to them at the end if we have time, or we can answer those questions offline. Thank you so much for your interest. And our next presenter is Access to Capital for Entrepreneurs. We're going to have Maria Peck speaking on behalf of AISE, and she's going to introduce him herself. Maria, you're welcome to join.
Thank you. Thank you, Paula. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Maria Peck. I'm the Director for the AISE Women Business Center in Georgia, or hosted by Access to Capital for Entrepreneurs. I joined AISE six years ago as a small business lender, and I brought over 20 years of sales and marketing experience. I'm also an entrepreneur, and I currently own a residential remodeling company, a small farm with my husband. I've also owned and run a successful restaurant for six years. I started with AISE six years ago as a small business lender, loan officer for small loans from between $5,000 and $50,000. I bring strong relationship building skills, community outreach, business consulting and underwriting knowledge. I currently serve on the National Board of the Women Business Centers, and I graduated from the NACAB National Association for Lasting Asset Builders Collegiate Fellowship, and also spoke at their national training conference earlier this year. I like to build collaborations and nurture them. I feel very strongly that the collaborations are the key to the success. So we work with organizations like SBC, SCORE, SBA, ClearPoint. We also work with business incubators like the City of Atlanta Women Entrepreneurship Initiative, Local Chambers, and other social-minded organizations. Next slide, please. I want to talk a little bit about AISE. AISE is a nonprofit organization and considered a CDFI, a Community Financial Development Institution. That's a certification awarded to us by the Treasury Department. For 16 years, we have been providing lending coupled with business advisory services or technical assistance, as is known in the industry. Almost two years ago, the Small Business Administration awarded us the Women Business Center grant to serve women entrepreneurs through training, one-on-one consultations and connections. Our stone bracket in lending offers an additional resource to those businesses looking for capital. All of our services are offered both in English and Spanish. We chose the MSSB workshop, and in the next slide, we chose to engage an instructor with extensive in-classroom training experience and business acumen. The chapters and represents our client demographics for the MSS English workshop training. Since inception, in October of 2014, the AISE Women Business Center has trained and counseled over 1,400 clients, through which we have identified a need for different training topics. I originally learned from the MSSB curriculum when Paula presented last year at the National Women Business Center Conference. During the presentation, I heard about the updates and changes to the curriculum, and also about the fully translated Spanish version, which I felt could be very valuable to us as we penetrated the market in our brand-new office located in Winnet County that consider the large, that's got 60% minority population. Our approach to the utilization of the MSSB curriculum was to deliver a four-hour training using the Financial Management and Cash Flow Module, with a designed catchy flyer with a twist by using the BFF acronym. Make your business financial your best friend. Nineteen clients registered for a daytime in-classroom workshop, delivered strategically during Small Business Week. We engaged a bank partner as a subject matter expert to complement the instructor training. We provide snacks, and also are looking in the future to provide additional locations. A large number of participants that attended did workshop out of the earliest stages of business ownership and at a crucial time to learn and implement the financial tools and pillars to ensure a more formal business practice. The next slide, please. In front of you, you have a sample of the flyer that we designed to promote and engage our clients, and also some pictures of the actual class and instructor. We decided to deliver the MSS curriculum in combination with other workshops and tools to help our clients build a stronger business foundation. Some of these workshops include the 92nd Pitch, a small class designed for mainstream businesses to learn how to concisely tell their story, a roadmap to social media, marketing and advertising, and our MSSB workshop, Business Financial Fundamentals, which includes the Financial Management and Cash Flow Modules from the MSSB curriculum. We have learned from past experience that promoting workshops can be challenging, getting attendees can be challenging, in a never-growing environment where extensive offerings are all over the city and clients find themselves distracted and perhaps confused by the large number of choices. We're still testing and learning proper times, locations, and costs. We leverage our media outlets like internet business radio, newspapers, social media, Twitter, Facebook, and we also engage our partners to support and utilize our internal database of over 6,000 clients to promote our events and workshops. We use technology as a registration tool, which allows us to collect key pieces of information that we later use to measure our results. Up until now, we have not been able to deliver and test the interest of our Hispanic clients for the MSSB curriculum. One of our challenges has been the lack of specialized bilingual instructors. Also, summer classes are typically not well-attended. For these reasons, we have decided to wait until this fall to introduce our MSSB training modules in Spanish. We have, we have learned from the Hispanic community, lack of resources, they just don't know that the resources available, but we know that they need to build a strong foundation for the businesses. Many of them are running informal enterprises with no scalability. However, we know, and it's proven, that given the proper tools, Hispanics are, which are very entrepreneurial by nature, are more resilient and committed to their business success. Every day, I meet Hispanic clients ready to work hard for the American dream. Our job and our commitment is to provide them with the tools and resources they need to understand how to conduct and manage a proper business in the United States. The sustainability of our program is going to depend largely in our internal resources, funding, to ensure the proper delivery of the modules with an experienced instructor. It would also be determined by the need of our clients. After each session, we encourage our clients to sign up for a one-on-one consultation. We also collect evaluations. And at the one-on-one consultation, in a more personalized level, we truly understand the needs of the clients and design an action plan with accountability tools. These one-on-one consultations help us be more targeted on how we deliver content in the future. More modules will be scheduled this fall and winter according to the need. We're very thankful to access the free MSSB curriculum as a powerful resource to new and existing businesses. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Maria, for your presentation. I want to open it up for the next Q and A segment, but I want to start with one question that I have on the queue, and the question is, where are the classes held and why was the selection, what was the selection made?
The classes are her, are local, a local WVC office. We have classroom availability, and that's located in North Cross. The reason we selected this location is because it's free to us, but right now, just last couple of months, we added a new location downtown Atlanta, so we're going to start leveraging that new location for, for the workshops as well.
Thank you. Operator, please open it up for questions.
If you would like to ask a question on the audio, please press star and then one on your touchtone phone and record your name. Again, that's star and then one on your touchtone phone, and again, it'll take just a few moments for any questions to queue up.
When a new question comes up, I want to address a previous question from someone who wants to know, how can someone become a trainer? And this is Paula Diaz from the FDIC, and I just want to explain that every alliance member has organized this and recruits the community and the different volunteers or pay the staff to become trainers. And a very important and relevant information that I provided to all of you earlier is that we are going to make available the Money Smart for Small Business during the trainer curriculum, which is a self-help tool. So you do not need to wait for an FDIC staffer to come and provide a during the trainer session, even though we're happy to, to help when needed, but you do not have to wait for us. You can now, once the, when the tool is available to you, organize the training. This curriculum is consistent with other modules of MSSB that you're familiar with. It has an instructor guide, a participant guide, and PowerPoint slides. Do you have any questions in the queue?
I'm showing no questions in the audio.
Thank you. Well, I have some questions in the, in the messaging feature, and some participants want to know, what is the cost of the MSSB classes? And this is a question for both presenters. So maybe Kim can go first and Maria can answer the question later. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't include that earlier. We do not charge for attendance at any of our workshops, and that includes our Money Smart for Small Business, Money Smart for Adults, older adults, and teens. They're free of charge to those who participate.
This is Maria. We originally wanted to charge, but decided later on to make it a free workshop, free and available to all. The only cost to us is of course, the instructor. We do hire an instructor, which we pay four hours and some hours of preparation, but the location is free to us as well.
Thank you. Another question that I have for both presenters is whether the participants have to wait until they have completed the MSSB session, or whether they can pursue a counseling session, since counseling seems to be available for, at both organizations during the training. Thank you. You can, once again, Kim can answer first and then followed by Maria. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. This is Kim. No, we encourage them to start sooner than later. We never want anybody to postpone what they're interested in doing.
It's the same for us here in Atlanta, Georgia. We, we definitely encourage them to come as soon as possible.
Excellent. Any other questions in the call?
I show no questions on the audio.
I want to thank the presenters once again for their excellent presentations. Hopefully, all of the attendees got new ideas for implementation, and I will be happy to take specific questions. I did receive a few specific questions on the Q and A that I will follow up with offline. But in the slide that you have before you right now, slide number 35, presents the questions for discussion that we always post to the conference. We always want to hear, how can we best encourage the use of Money Smart for Small Business? What can we do to encourage more bank and nonprofit collaborations to benefit small businesses? How can we best help banks reach entrepreneurs with limited banking experience? And how can we best measure success? Well, we offer Money Smart for Small Business no strings attached, meaning we do not ask any of the alliance members to report to us any of their results. We most definitely want to hear your experience, and we always want to showcase those who are, who are using the resources, whether they're doing it successfully or not. We've heard today, both organizations have gone through a trial and error process, and they have modified their programs constantly, and they're constantly monitoring the feedback that they receive from their clients, and that is a great practice. So it doesn't always have to turn out perfect the first time, and this is a great forum to share the experiences. So I am your point of contact if you are interested in being featured at the Alliance Town Hall, or if you want to get all opportunities like newsletters that we, that we have, and we are interested in supporting your trendy trainer efforts. Hopefully, once the tool is available, we will be hearing many more inquiries about how we can support new trendy trainer sessions. A question that I have popping up is whether this video recording will be available, and the answer is yes. All of the Town Hall meeting sessions have been made available as a reference in our website, and you can easily find this by going to www.fdic.gov/moneysmart. You will easily find the Money Smart for Small Business tab, and once you click there, you're going to find various easy hyperlink. In the first page, you are going to see a section that's In the first page, you are going to see a section that's called Town Hall Meetings and once you click in there, you're going to be brought to the recordings of these I have another question coming in and it says, what is the requirement on Train the Trainer? So, I'm not sure I understand the question, but I'm going to try to answer. So, the Train the Trainer curriculum has been designed to be facilitated in a three and a half hour session, including two breaks, so, and it is a next three hours. And as I explained, it includes a PowerPoint presentation. It even includes resources such as an agenda, an invitation, and a plan of action that might be used during Train the Trainer sessions. Any, any, any alliance member is, can, can offer a Train the Trainer session, even if they're not going to offer Money Smart for Small Business directly, if they are going to do it through another organization such as a partner agency, they are welcome to provide a Train the Trainer session that can actually be part of their contribution. We have often seen financial institutions that help train trainers and so hopefully there's an approach that we will hear more of soon and we would love to have it showcased in our Town Hall meeting. Well, at this time, I want to turn it back to, Wen. Thank you. I received another question about when is the Train the Trainer material going to be available? And as I said, it's going to be available very soon. We're in the process of finalizing the, the materials for publication and it's going to take a few weeks for the materials to be available for download at FDIC catalog. But as I said, everyone attending this or registering for this workshop will receive an announcement whenever the materials are available. And once again, we would love to be part of the first Train the Trainer sessions that you may organize using the new curriculum. Yeah, and being just three minutes away from the hour, I'm going to pass it over to Janet Gordon again, who's going to provide us with a few closing remarks. Thanks.
So, I just want to add my thanks to all the participants and the presenters. I think that one thing we've learned also is that it's all about collaboration. I think both of our, all of our presenters have said that word. Learned something today about some of the benefits of recruiting diverse volunteers to help with the training, not just as a primary training trainer perhaps, but also to supplement and enhance whatever you're doing. It can't hurt to have people with different kinds of background in business come to your meetings and also to have bankers in the room. So, we really encourage that kind of collaboration. So, once again, we do expect to continue to provide support for people who want to train trainers and we should contact Paola or your community affairs specialist and we will give access to this presentation as well as to add a few slides on additional contacts and links. So, once again, thanks all for your participation and we hope you get fully engaged with MSSB.
Thank you very much, Janet. And there was one more announcement. Stay tuned, we are going to be offering a webinar to go over an overview of the Money Smart for Small Business Train the Trainer curriculum whenever it's available. We are looking forward to hear from all of you. And one last announcement, as you can see in the slide, in the last slide, sba.gov/moneysmarts also has the Money Smart for Small Business modules available in their website for download. They have the English versions available for easy access and we made those available in our catalog. Thank you so much again. We appreciate your participation. Operator, you can officially end the call. Thank you.
This does conclude today's conference call. We thank you for your participation and you may disconnect at this time.